Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at six P. M. I now call the meeting to order. Would you please join us in the pleasurable audience? Pleasurable audience. Uh, city recorder Eric, would you please give us a roll call, please?
Counselor McGee.
President.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Van Dremelin.
Present.
Counselor McLeod.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. So before we get started on the agenda, uh, there's been a couple of changes. The recess, uh, recessed executive session, um, item six has been removed and I'm striking item ten Bravo to bring that back at a later date, uh, probably hopefully after the break. And then we'll go ahead and proceed, proceed to the agenda. Next is adoption of the consent calendar. Counselors?
I'd move adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, counselors. Next is presentations and ceremonies, street maintenance funding discussion. Stacy Barbell Castro, item pages fifty-five through fifty-seven here packet.
Good evening, council and mayor. Give me a minute. I'm gonna get my presentation posted.
Mighty big bottle.
All right. Um, so this presentation is a continuation of discussions that staff initiated with council to discuss Albany streets and how we do and don't maintain them. This slide includes the web address to all of those past presentations and there is also information on this website from past discussions that we've had on street maintenance topics going with other city councils going back to twenty sixteen, so almost ten years or actually twelve years. Tonight, um, we will talk about the revenue that the transportation fund receives that we can, that can be used for capital projects to maintain and reconstruct our streets, the funding need and the funding gap. We will also talk about the two options that council asked us to work at, work on to generate additional revenue for street maintenance and construction, the street maintenance fee and a local gas tax. And then finally, we will discuss considerations for public outreach and education. So why does staff keep coming back to council year after year to talk about street maintenance? Well, we do know that street condition is a major concern in our community. In recent and past surveys, street condition polled as the worst city service. It is the greatest concern in our city behind homelessness. These results do not come as a surprise. Street condition has been a lone, a known issue going back to at least nineteen eighty-two. I don't know about you, but in nineteen eighty-two, I think I was in middle school, maybe. Um, but in nineteen eighty-two, it was the first unsuccessful attempt at a local gas tax in our town. A local gas tax and street utility fees have been discussed with current and past councils at least five other times and every time either failed at the ballot or councils have decided not to move forward with any local funding options. There has been one exception, a ten million dollar bond was passed by the voters in nineteen ninety-eight and with the funding from this bond, we were able to rebuild many of our major roads in Albany.
Was that just major roads or any neighborhood streets at all?
Oh, Elm Street, right?
Yeah, Elm Street is the functional classification of Elm Street is a collector street. So the bond funds were used to construct just the major roads that see the highest traffic volume.
Thank you.
Um, so there are just over two hundred miles of paved roads that are maintained, oh, oh, sorry about that, um, in Albany, represented on this bar chart. The arterial and collector streets, which are the streets that see the highest traffic volume are represented by the blue and red bars. Um, for the most part, these streets are in good to fair condition. The reason for this is because current and past councils have set goals directing staff to use what funding is available for street maintenance on these streets. The local streets are represented by the yellow bars on this chart. They make up the majority of streets in Albany. There are over one hundred and forty miles of local streets in the city. Fifty-four point one or thirty-eight percent are in good condition and then an almost equal amount, fifty-two point three miles or thirty-seven percent is in poor condition. So the condition of our local streets is due to age. Um, many people think that we invest in local streets in newer neighbors, neighborhoods, but the reality is, is that we don't have funding to invest in our local streets. So the local streets that are in good condition, they've been constructed within the last ten to twenty years. The local streets that are in poor condition are in the older neighborhoods. Okay, so this is sort of the last foundational slide that I'm gonna go over, but I did wanna share it because the pavement deterioration curve, um, helps show the relationship between the cost to invest in maintaining pavements when they are in good condition compared to the cost to invest in pavements when they're in poor condition. So we've discussed with council that the best financial strategy to maintain pavements is to keep the good roads good. Um, due to the lack of funding, we are unable to follow this approach with our local streets, but we do follow this approach with arterial and collector streets. The table on the slide shows different maintenance options that we can use on pavements and they are utilized on, on different conditions. And then I also showed the cost of three of these methods applied to the same street and you can see if we were to reconstruct this street, it's gonna cost seven hundred thousand dollars. If you do a grind and overlay on this five hundred foot long street, it would cost one hundred thousand dollars. So waiting for a street, not having the money to invest in a pavement when it's in good condition means that it's going to fall down into that steep part of the curve and then you end up paying seven times the cost had you the funding to invest in it when it was in good condition. The last thing I wanna say about this slide is, um, while this strategy of investing in good streets makes financial sense, it will seem counterintuitive to the public. So the public is going to see the city spending money to construct asphalt overlays on North Albany Road and on Salem Avenue this summer and they're probably going to think, why is the city spending money on these roads? They don't seem that bad, but we are investing money now so that we don't lose the roads and have to spend more money later. Okay, so the transportation fund receives revenue from four sources and again, this is just going to be a high level review of these funding sources. I'm not going to go over all the detail that we've discussed in past presentations. So the first one is state gas tax and state gas tax can be used to maintain existing pavement. It can be used on all street classifications, so it can be used on our local streets. The federal gas tax can only be used on arterial and collector streets. The other thing about federal gas tax is that Albany has to compete with other jurisdictions in our urbanized area. So it's not a given that we're going to be getting federal gas tax every year. In nineteen ninety-nine, we started charging the sewer and water funds in lieu of franchise fee, um, recognizing that they use right of way similar to the other franchise utilities, the gas company, the garbage company, power company. And then the last funding source shown on this slide is transportation systems development charges. Um, SDCs are restricted to growth-related projects that are identified in our TSB. They can't be used for pavement maintenance and can only be used on the major streets. And so that's why when I go to this next slide, you're not gonna see SDCs.
Counselor Smith has a question.
The sewer and water in lieu of franchise fees, um, she would include the stormwater in lieu of fee now, correct?
Yes, you're forecasting to like three, three slides from now.
Okay, okay.
I, I do have one question. You talked about the local streets, so the ones that are in very poor, poor repair. Now, when you do those, we do also go down and check the pipes and that adds additional time to the project as well, correct?
We ha, we always evaluate the water sewer and storm infra, infrastructure when we do a street reconstruction project and the other thing that can add cost is when we do reconstruction, we have to bring all the curb ramps up to current ADA.
Thank you.
Let's see. Okay, so here you see that, um, the funding sources that were listed in the previous slide, but not the systems development charges. The revenue available each year for street capital projects based on a five-year average is three million dollars. We did include a reserve balance of five hundred thousand dollars. This is for emergency. It's half of what we carry in our water and sewer funds, but we're trying to maximize the amount of pavements that we can rehabilitate. It seems like a lot of money, but remember, we have two hundred miles of road and just for some perspective, in today's dollars, if we were to reconstruct all the local roads that have failed, we would need three hundred million dollars. So it's a, it's a big, big gap that we're trying to fill there. Here is the funding gap that we discussed with council during this series of presentations and based on current street condition, fifteen point eight million dollars is needed annually to repair, fully construct and maintain Albany's two hundred plus miles of streets. Subtracting the available revenue of three million leaves an annual funding gap of twelve point eight million dollars. Generating an additional twelve point eight million dollars in revenue is not a realistic funding target and that is why in January twenty twenty-four, staff discussed a strategy with council to build a more realistic funding target. Um, this scenario was adjusted from the previous. We are still using the keep good roads good strategy for arterials, collectors and local streets that are in good condition, um, but we reduced the funding available for the local streets in poor condition. This strategy will at least make sure that the percentage of local streets that have failed isn't gonna increase and we'll be able to start, start to fix the local streets that, that have failed. So this strategy leaves an annual funding gap of six million dollars and next I will discuss how we're going to start to close this six million dollar funding gap. So counselor Smith, here's the stormwater in lieu of franchise fee. So council just passed the stormwater in lieu of franchise fee at the June eleventh meeting and we estimate that we will receive three hundred and forty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. It's not a lot, but it, at least it's a start. I hesitated to even put funding down for House Bill twenty twenty-five. So House Bill twenty twenty-five is the transportation package that's currently being considered in this legislative session. There has not been a vote on this House bill on the floor. It's been referred back to committee. I've been tracking this every hour and I think it was just like at three thirty this afternoon, they finally scheduled another public hearing for tomorrow and there's a hundred and fifty-five page amendment.
Wow.
Yeah. So, um, we're hopeful that something will be passed this legislative session and that it would result in some funding for Albany. Um, this House bill is unique in that it focuses new revenue on operations and maintenance, um, and includes the seventy, thirty, twenty split with counties and cities. And it also includes solutions to capture revenue from the electric vehicles that don't pay at the pump. For example, this would be those Amazon vans that you see driving on our roads. So again, we're hopeful, but um, at this point, we just don't know if we are going to see any additional revenue coming to Albany from, from this House bill. The two options that council asked us to work on to generate funding at a local level are the street maintenance fee and the local gas tax. And... Let me catch up. So Rob Emmons is managing a contract with the consultant Gallardi-Ross Dean Group to develop the structure for a street maintenance fee. Council heard from Deb Gallardi in March of this year where she discussed street maintenance fee case studies to provide information on how other cities structure their street maintenance fees. Um, the work that has been taking place in the background since that meeting is, is complete and so we expect to be checking in with council probably at the August seventh meeting, I believe. And at that meeting, we'll provide information on groupings of non-residential and residential account types, fee categories, and then ask for guidance from council on moving forward with the street maintenance fee. So it's estimated that a local gas tax in Albany would generate four hundred thousand dollars per penny of gas tax. So a five cent gas tax would generate approximately two million dollars and a ten cent gas tax would generate approximately four million dollars. There have been three unsuccessful, unsuccessful attempts at a local gas tax in Albany, including the nineteen eighty-two attempt I mentioned. Um, the most recent attempt was initiated by council in February twenty eighteen. Um, it did not have the full council support and it was placed on the May twenty eighteen election. This time period didn't allow staff to provide any public outreach or education, um, so that we would have been in violation of election law. And the gas tax failed, um, it was soundly defeated. So it failed by seventy percent in Lynn County and then by a margin of two to one in Benton County. However, the public outreach efforts that Conser, North America and D H M Research completed this spring, council heard from D H M during the last, I think it was this month, the first work session. Um, they did show that with two hours of education to our focus group participants, the majority of them went from not supporting a gas tax to supporting a gas tax at high levels, at the five cent and ten cent levels. The other thing, the research showed that with just fifteen minutes of education during the community survey of three hundred likely voters, a slim majority, fifty-one percent, supported the gas tax at the five and ten cent levels. So this does demonstrate that with an adequate public outreach and education campaign, we could pass a local gas tax at the ballot. People do understand that the street condition in Albany is a problem for our local streets. Um, however, without education, most people think that this is a result of poor maintenance. They don't recognize that the root cause is lack of funding. Most people think that street maintenance is supported by property taxes and that a lot, lot of people actually thought that Albany already had a local gas tax. So we asked our consultants, D H M and Conser to kind of provide a recipe for, for success that they've seen for ballot measures and this is what they provided. And we have checked one box. People do understand that street condition is a problem in Albany, but we do have a lot of ground to cover in order to cover all these other checkboxes. Which is why, um, I think originally when we spoke with council, we were targeting putting a gas tax on this November ballot, but we just do not think that there is adequate time to do a public outreach and education campaign. We would be repeating history with what happened in twenty eighteen. In order to put a gas tax on this November ballot, council would have to, um, do this at the July ninth meeting. And so we would have, staff would have virtually no time to, to support the gas tax. Um, our recommendations is that council direct staff to continue to de, develop and implement a public outreach and education campaign in support of local street maintenance funding. We have spoken with two community groups and are scheduled to speak with, um, the chamber, I think next in two weeks. Um, we also recommend that council ask staff, staff to continue working on the local gas tax, possibly considering it in twenty twenty-six and then continue developing the structure for the street maintenance fee.
Got a question?
Which, uh, community groups did you speak with and which ones do you, you say the chamber, what are the other?
Yeah, we've respe, we've spoken to both Rotary Clubs and we are going to be speaking with the chamber. We, we have a lot more ground to, to, to make. We wanna be going to the farmers markets. We wanna have neighborhood meetings in each of the wards. Um, there's just a lot of work to do.
Right, I just wanna make sure it's far and wide.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Counselors?
Um, yeah, I, I understand the, uh, the timeline and the difficulties. Um, the November, you know, the consultants pointed out the November twenty twenty-five, uh, ballot, um, timeline is probably the best. Um, I hesitate to pursue the May twenty twenty-six ballot, um, which includes primary elections for most offices. Um, is paying for ballot access been a concern? Um, we have to pay. Um, like, I don't know, you know jurisdictions, I think March of twenty twenty-six is a ballot, um, possibility too. If, if paying for it is, is not an, not an option, I would look at that. Um, if we have to move off the November twenty twenty-five, um, but I just would be reticent to go for May of twenty twenty-six.
So any other counselors?
Something I'm curious about, just knowing the number of people that are gonna be voting in November versus May as well. I'm trying to think how many of those folks are showing up to the community conversation meetings? Who would be, so I'm trying to think, um, what would be the best way to reach the, reach people that would be voting for the education? I'm just trying to think, where's the best bang for the buck? Is it through other ma, I don't know. I'm, I just wanna make sure that everyone has the opportunity bec, to become educated, but people that are probably already plugged in and involved and know what's going on are probably already showing up to community conversation meetings, mostly, right?
It's reaching the rest of them, that's the thing, right?
Is it, are they gonna show up?
Well, um...
I'm hoping that there'll be other things outside of the community conversations in which we could engage those potential voters, those people who are not engaged, um, or as much. So whatever you gotta do, you gotta stand on a corner with some, whatever you gotta do. We gotta get the people. We gotta get the education 'cause again, we would like for sure to reach them far and wide and folks who wouldn't necessarily be involved with it. That's not only just community groups, but if that's events that are happening, I think the earlier we start, the better and that we keep the momentum going.
It should be regular and often, right? You know, show up the same place three or four times a month and have a conversation. So I personally think the November twenty-six election will give us that time to do the outreach, the education, re-education and, and bring other folks into the meeting, into discussion.
November twenty twenty-six or May twenty twenty-six?
November.
I thought we were talking about May?
November twenty-six.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
We haven't heard back from GAPS yet, but you'd asked about a calendar for
Right.
other initiatives. And this, Darren Lane tells me that this, uh, this November, they'll be going out at the county for their public safety levy and that, uh, both Lynn and Benton County have renewals set for next May.
So that, we would wanna compete with those.
Correct.
So November twenty-sixth may make the most sense because what we don't want to happen is blowback on us because of those measures on the ballot or blowback on them because our measures on the ballot. That would not be good. So we wanna have them continue forward with the educate, the developing education piece.
I think that that would be wise to continue the, developing education piece. What I hesitate with is there's no way that a gas tax would pass if we
Brush it.
do, one brush it, but also if we do a street maintenance fee beforehand. There's no way a gas tax will pass. And that will overwhelmingly be more expensive for people living here in Albany versus, you know, if we were paying, like I, I did the math, you know, if we had a ten cent gas tax or a five cent gas tax, that's costing me four to six bucks a month, you know, and that's, uh, people that are coming off of the highway, we're right off I five. And actually, I'll tell you, I was talking to, um, someone that was working in the legislature and they're like, oh, I love Albany. I always stop there and get my gas. It's the cheapest gas on I five. And I'm like, oh, that's so great. Thanks for doing that. Did you know we don't have a gas tax? They're like, what? They're like, you're like one of the only community, they're like, that's why your gas is so cheap. So I, I hesitate. So I hesitate, I hesitate to not act more quickly if, yeah, I just do not think that we should pass a road maintenance fee prior to getting this in the ballot and actually doing a real education campaign, because with the previous times it's been on the ballot, like, I remember 2018, you know, Rich Kellum was on here, he was like, "No," and Mike Sykes was on here, he was like, "No." And like, I'm grateful for their opinions, but they didn't have full council support, as you mentioned, and we didn't have a robust education campaign. And I really feel like this is truly an opportunity for us to connect with our constituents and educate them, because folks didn't even realize we didn't have a gas tax.
Right.
They think that there's like a road maintenance fairy that's supposed to be fixing things, and she's just on vacation, you know, like, let's actually respect our constituents to do that, do that work.
Mr. Mayor, with respect to Councilor Newton's timing, concern about timing, with a, and I would ask Stacy to correct me if I'm wrong, and Gina as well, but with a street maintenance fee, you can have, you can construct that and then set it at zero if needed. The rate is set by resolution, so you have more control over that. So if you have a street maintenance fee at zero, that wouldn't allay all people's fears about a gas tax, but it would negate that concern that you have a transportation utility fee in place.
And just building the house does not necessarily mean walking in the door.
And to add to that, you can even build the structure to implement the street maintenance fee and put it on the shelf. You don't even have to set a rate.
It just gets the work done, so if we do need to go to that, we can do that.
Yeah. And we'll talk more about that at the August meeting.
Counsel, okay with that? Oh, Counselor Thompson, go ahead.
Yeah. This isn't, just getting back to election dates, if I recall from the consultants, the expected mix of voters was, it wasn't good for like a May primary election, and it definitely was not good for a general election, which November 2026 would be. And so that's why I think March, I'm remembering, I'm trying to remember the dates that are available, and yes, we don't want to compete with another jurisdiction, because I think offhand, it's kind of known that people pick, and one jurisdiction will become the winner and one will not, if you have two options. That's kind of, that's kind of the colloquial knowledge of ballot measures. But I just would hesitate for a November 2026 election. The mix of expected voters is not good, not good for us, so I'm just throwing that, that's a long, that's a long ways off, so.
I agree, it's a long ways off, but I think it gives us an opportunity to do the outreach and education, and then...
Not against that, not against that, I just, I just, I don't want to waste all our effort based on something that we knew was difficult to begin with.
So, go ahead, please, anyone else? So, go back to the previous slide, please.
This one, or?
Is everybody okay with what you see here? We can set dates and times later, but we don't want to stop the work that's already started.
Do you need a motion, or are you just looking?
No, just thumbs up, just thumbs up, yeah.
Thank you.
And are you going to be here for the whole meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I need to talk to that person, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing. The potential sale of, make sure I'm not missing anything. Yes. The potential sale of real property, subject properties, Lynn County, Panel 115-03W-07 Alpha Bravo, Tax Lots 020, 0201 dot 0002, comma, and 0204. For those who wish to testify, there will be three options available, which were described in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:31 PM. Does the staff have a report?
We do. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'll be pretty brief with this. Been to you a few times before with the potential sale for, and received direction on the potential sale for three properties around 9th and Jackson, those being the ones you see on the screen here outlined in red, 503 Ninth Avenue Southeast, 519 Ninth Avenue Southeast, and 817 Jackson Street. These properties are zoned LI, or light industrial. Their appraised value is approximately $145,000, and council had provided direction that we post the properties for sale, which was done in accordance with ORS 221-725, actually posted on-site, all three of them, and an ad ran in the Democrat Herald beginning on June 14th. That provides notifying everybody of this public hearing. So the process we're looking at tonight, based on council's direction, was, is a little bit unique in that when I'm done doing my initial presentation here, we'll go to people that have signed up to speak, and those people that have signed up to speak are either going to be people that just want to provide testimony, or that are providing pitches. They've also provided sealed bids, which remain sealed in the envelope here. Once that testimony is complete, I will come back up. We were going to do an executive session, and the reality of that was, is really designed to prevent kind of an auction-style presentation, is a clear definable line of when the presentation is and separating the bids, so there was, it was a fair process. We don't need a recess to an executive session, I'll actually come back up, we'll open the bids together, review the prices, close the public hearing, and then council can deliberate. I'll be here to help answer any questions on that. With that, I think we're ready to step into the presentation portion of this, unless there's any questions before we get started.
Counselors, any questions? Written materials submitted by the deadline were forwarded to the council. If there's any, there was one that was forwarded to us, the presentation, okay? No written materials were received. I will now call on those registered to speak. Is anybody registered to speak? So do I do this first, or do I do them first? Do I do the registered first, or after the presentation?
Mayor, presumably all the folks that are interested in providing presentations will have registered to speak on the sign-up sheet.
So a virtual presentation, Laurel Van Winkle?
How is everybody?
Good.
Thanks for having me.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, council, everybody here today. I'll just go through this. Stickers coming out. So we're here to talk about property 503 Ninth Avenue. We think it would be a great location for our cat rescue and cafe, Cuckoo Cats. You've all heard of us here in the council once before. You guys, I believe, have some photos, I hope, in front of you. If not, then that's okay. Our goal is to save Albany from our feral cat crisis. We have a lot of people that are doing this on their own, and trying to take care of the problem individually. They are doing the best that they can, but the problem's growing exponentially, and we're here to bring all those services together. We want to take all those independent people, bring them together in one place, and we want to use our cat house and our cafe to fund that, and also to provide a place where we can rehabilitate and bring the community together as a hub as well. And Light Industrial is the zoning area where we would do that. This location being so close to downtown is ideal. So about us, we're Traps Bay Rehabilitate Rescue, funded by our Hawaiian Cat Cafe, solving the cat crisis, and we do have a pending relationship with the Heartland Humane, I'm sorry, I just misspoke, with Safe Haven. They can struggle, especially during kitten season, because they're no-kill. When their shelter gets full, they turn people away. So if people come there and need help, they simply get turned away. We would have capacity to ensure that never happens. We would work with taking cats back and forth, so it would improve that situation as well. So we made headlines, we got ourselves in the paper, and I strongly believe that that issue is due to how severe the problem is, and how strong the desire is for a facility like this and a cat cafe. I mean, face it, it's kind of the new thing, and to have something like that in Albany would be really awesome for tourism, for people that live here. You combine it with Hawaiian Shave Ice, that's something the families can go and enjoy without even having to go inside the cat house. So I think it's something that would draw families and tourism alike. And the article was pretty comprehensive, it wasn't just a simple little blurb, and our lovely Safe Haven did put some comments of their own in there, noting that it would be a good resource that we'd benefit from, and that there's definitely a need for more resources here.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So there's that, thank you. Are we good?
Yep.
Okay, I appreciate your time today, you guys.
Brian Orr?
Counselor members, actually, Bill Van Vliet will be the one that will be speaking to, and if I can fill in any of the blanks, I'll be happy to do that, I'm representing him.
Thanks, Mayor, council people. For you guys that don't really know anything about Van Vliet, we've been in business since 1978, we serve over 400 customers in the area. We also support many, many nonprofit organizations in the area. We would like to acquire the property for expansion. We would move our existing truck parking to that area so we can add on property for our business in the back. And our first step upon your guys' acceptance of this would be to set up a meeting with Helping Hands, because in conjunction with them, we want to trade some properties, that would make sense. We would get the middle property they own on...
Jackson.
On Jackson, and then we would, in turn, give them a piece of property on Ninth Street. So we would have three properties, and they would have their property that would better help their system. So that, as soon as you're accepted, we'll set up a meeting with them to negotiate that. And I would estimate it would at least, if we did this add-on and added to our facility, it's going to be anywhere from two to five employees added to our staff.
If I can add something to the council, is that I'm pretty heavily involved in the community, and I will let you know that Bill's company, not only with Rotary, but with other businesses in town, Casa, ABC House, Furniture Share, these are all big companies, nonprofit that always need help, and their company has always been there to step up and help them out. So not only are they looking for business growth, but they also want to grow with the community and support the nonprofits. So I just thought I'd throw that in there, because I'm pretty entrenched in that group of people.
Thank you. Bless you, guys.
Good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That's it?
Thank you.
So Brian. Jay Vats? Are you here to speak about the properties? Are you here to speak about the properties? The properties in question, are you here about that? Okay, so businessman in public, then, I'll call you out. Josh Mitchell?
Hello. I am Josh Mitchell, thank you for the time. I'm here also about the same properties, and my idea or development is mostly just creating spaces that can be used for other people in town. As someone who's looked for space, warehouse space, things like that, as a contractor, it's hard to find smaller spaces that have availability for not just storage, but small office, bathroom, parking somewhere where you can be secure. These sites provide that. They are fenced sites, they have long enough that you can get a driveway into for garages or office space. I think the front one in the corner would be a really good property for possible artisans who want to do some kind of welding and have a manufacturing for their facility that would actually have street space, not necessarily like a retail space, but there are different manufacturing that is done that would also need to have some variations of storefront with warehouse. So my proposal is mostly just to develop the properties in that way, whether it be warehouse space or small industrial buildings, something that can be utilized by community members. Questions?
No, this is time for us to listen.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's pretty much it. As for jobs and stuff like that, it's not, I'm not trying to directly create a new job, I'm trying to give space that would allow others to expand themselves and build their own business, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Registered to speak. I declare the, would you want to talk now? Oh, yes, you're right. Excuse me, is anyone else in chambers that'd like to speak to us during this public hearing? Please. Say your name when you come up.
Does anybody?
Go to the city registered recorder, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm David Steele, Executive Director, Albany Helping Hands. Happy to represent our facility tonight about parcel number 519. So as you well know, Albany Helping Hands has been part of operations in Albany, helping the homeless since 1985. The organization is faith-based, and our whole goal is to help our homeless community. We're an emergency shelter, transitional housing facility, which offers temporary housing while individuals work toward permanent solutions. So we're trying to create a pathway of independence for our individuals, so that they can re-enter into society as productive citizens. So expanding our footprint to include the property on 519 would help us to do that. The map show exactly what the footprint would look like, with bottom stories being retail and commercial properties, to help create jobs for the shelter itself. We would be most likely between 10 and 12 employees to help with peer support, as well as case management and different entities like that, as well as possibly moving our thrift store from First Street and incorporating it over there, so it would be retail. It's kind of the same footprint that Union Gospel Mission has in Salem, where their thrift store is on the same block that the homeless shelter is. In addition to providing a place to live, we also provide meals and all kinds of different assistance to bring people back to a healthy place. So many people, when they come to us, they're not good shape, and this opportunity would allow us to serve more people. Just a brief information, you know, Houston, Texas, Finland, they've all created drastically reducing street homelessness by providing permanent housing without preconditions. And providing that stable housing leads to long-term success for individuals that have made the streets their home. So integrating healthcare services is part of what we'd like to do with that footprint, peer support, and mental health counseling, which is much needed with our challenged individuals in our homeless community. Trauma-inforced care, many shelters have, and they partner with a lot of different community development resources to make those things happen, and it would be great if it was all together in one place. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Matthew? Director, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to throw the map back up here really quick, just so we can see it, if I get my mouse to work.
Mr. Mayor, is it time to close the hearing, or?
We'll want to leave the...
After he finishes.
Okay. Yeah, we'll want to leave the public hearing open until we're done with the bid opening portion of this, so let me, there we go. Okay. So, um, as I get ready to open the bids here, I'll just briefly talk about as, as we were given direction from council. When we did this is the, the concept was to, you know, obviously, uh, open this up for proposals, uh, with the ideal that those proposals would be, um, provide uses that would be compliant with the existing zoning of light industrial, LI. And just, uh, after kind of hearing the proposals here, I can give you a kind of quick report of what that looks like. The, the first proposal from Kukua Cats, uh, unfortunately, with that being kind of a retail sales and service or even an office space, that, that would require, um, a zone change. Um, we did look at the, as, as she, she mentioned behind me, the, the kennel option. It would not fit within the kennel use based on our existing definitions. That's just information. Uh, the other two proposals, you know, on the surface of this, we're just going off of what we heard, appear that they would fit within the LI zone. And then the, the final proposal from Helping Hands, depending on the, the, the use on the lower floor, that would support in the LI zone apartments above that industrial slash commercial use. It, it would really depend on what the exact use of that is, but it could very well be possible. So just wanted to give a little bit of background on that before kind of get into the, the bid opening portion of this.
So before you move on.
Sure.
I, I think the council wants to know this as well. Is it all three properties at 145 or each individual property 145?
All three properties totaled together were 145. Um, they were each, uh, valued and the appraisals are in your pack and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, uh, varied from 45,000 to 50,000. So that's how you end up with the 145.
Make sure.
I think they were 250s and 45.
So make sure that was clear.
Yeah, but thank you. Um, I am going to share one other thing here.
Have those on the screen?
Yes. So I just want to include kind of the bid tabulation so that you guys can see this. As I open them, I will put those in here. So you have to, this'll be a little bit of a clunky process because I'm seeing these for the first time too, so.
Take your time.
So this first one is from Albany Helping Hands, which. Guys get to make fun of my typing.
This AHH, AHH.
And this bid is for property at 519 for $25,000. Let me just make sure there's no other bids in here. Next bid is from Josh Mitchell. And this would be for... All three properties, uh, in there. I'm just giving a total here, so I will just put the total down here for $90,000. And the next bid is for Van Vliet. An abbreviation, um, that we can come back to if we need to. It is for a consolidated bid of 125,000 for all three. And the last bid is for Kukua Cats. And she's indicating that she just wants to put the first one, and this was for 503. And that is for $1. So, uh, and I'm happy to put the properties back up on the screen if you want to see those or how, however you would like to do that. But with the, the bids now read, you are welcome to ask me any questions or you can, uh, close the public hearing and move on to deliberation.
Also, um, any questions of the presenters? If not, I can close the public hearing, we can move on to deliberations.
Is that everyone's final? I would just really wish everything was coming in at like our 145, you know, estimate. I know it was at like, what was it, 162 last year for like Lynn assessors? And we're at, just asking 145 for the three parcels.
The, the interesting thing on this one, Council Newton, is that, uh, we have a unique scenario where the actual appraisal came in lower than the assessed values you're indicating. Um, uh, there, there's a lot of factors that kind of roll into that, but I certainly understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. I just really feel like we need to, we're already offloading property that was owned by us. I feel like we should at least get the assessed value. That's my two cents.
Do the councilors have anything? Well, we should probably close it and start deliberation.
At this point, if there's no basically other procedural questions, anything like that for me?
Councilor McLeod has something.
Good.
Thank you. Um, just a procedural question. Um, are we able to provide counteroffers?
I, I think that's certainly within the realm of possibility. Um, I, I would defer to, to.
City attorney for that one.
City attorney on that one.
You could. Um, I think that we def- we, we, yes, legally we could. I think that having it this way before was to, so that we wouldn't have like a, an auction type scenario going on and that might create that. It might not, I don't know. But, um, but yes, you can certainly counteroffer, so.
I think possibly the, the way to, to move forward with something like that, and Mr. Kidd could correct me if he's wrong, is if there was a, a bidder that was on here that you felt was, it, all of this is at the discretion of the council. You do not have to sell to the highest bidder. You can base it on anything that you like. Um, if there was a, a proposal on here that you were particularly interested in, um, there could be a negotiation there on the price. I, I think if council wanted to, if that would work, Sean. So hopefully that answers your question, Councilor McLeod.
Is that something that would happen in open session or would we recess to executive for that?
Question.
I think we started this in session, I think we should probably.
Or run it through.
Keep it in open session for this point, yeah. I mean, unless we were going to talk among ourselves with, without the applicants in the room, which would be a whole different procedure. But if we're just, yeah, I mean, at this point, we are open.
Cat's off the bag, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Pun intended.
I have a comment.
I, I, I think the, you know, with the, the process, the way that it was structured, we're kind of, the prices that we get are the prices, or the prices we see are the prices that we get. Uh, you don't have to accept any of those prices if you don't want. Um, or there could be direction given to go out and negotiate with one of those bidders, uh, if, if, if that was what council wanted to do. So I, it's, it's really kind of up to this council of what, what you'd like to do with this, uh, understanding there is no sense of urgency. We're not, you know, forced to put these up for sale, you know, that we've kind of had those discussions as we've done this presentation. It's, it's really at the discretion of council as to, to what you'd like to do with the properties.
So, go ahead, Marilyn. Councilor Smith.
I wasn't thinking about money when we put these up for sale. In fact, I was the person who said that I didn't want to sell the properties. I didn't see any urgency to do so. However, I, I, and I'm looking at this, um, in what I consider a practical way. What's the best use of the property? What, what makes sense in an awkward neighborhood? Van Vliet has, um, been there a long time and we have gone through growing pains with them before. Difficult, uh, expansion on the other side of the road. And then, uh, the situation that was there with Marvin's Garden. I have heard from folks at Helping Hands for 20 years about dreams of expansion and, um, bringing in more services and making it a one-stop shop. And I get that. I, what I hear from Mr. Van Vliet and from Mr. Steele, sounds like a, a good working relationship is in the offing and it could meet both needs. It sounds really practical to move the truck parking across the street to allow you to expand at the, in the other spot. And it fits the zone. That's the other thing I was thinking of. It fits the zone.
If I could make a quick recommendation, if there's no other, um, specific questions for me, I, I would recommend closing the public hearing so that council could deliberate on it. I'm, I'm still available to answer questions, but just, just, it's formality.
I, I have none other than the zoning piece. The Councilor Smith has answered that. So we talked about it during the, during our public hearing anyway. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, council. I declare the hearing closed at eight, 6:58 PM. So.
This is the opportunity for council to deliberate on if they would like to do something with these properties, um, and provide council some, or council, provide staff some direction there.
So right now, we're not collecting any taxes or anything on those properties, correct?
They're publicly owned, so you're not collecting any taxes, correct?
And Mr. Van Vliet has worked out an arrangement outside of us with Albany Helping Hands that, that I've, I heard? So it kind of, it kind of solves two problems at one, one interaction, correct?
That, that would be, uh, that would appear so based on what they presented, yes.
Creating jobs as well? I'm, I'm for it personally. I can't vote, you know, unless it's a tie.
Yeah.
But, um, I support Bill Van Vliet's business. I'm a small business owner myself and I think an opportunity to create jobs for, for the community, I think it's, it's a good deal for us.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I agree. Um, I'm really looking at the Van Vliet proposal. I, I think that's the one that interests me the most. They talked about, I mean, who am I to tell them what to do? I'm just trying to sell them this property. I, I want to know more about the, the partnership that was kind of outlined. Could we, I mean, is it possible to kind of say, and the rest of council can agree or disagree, but, um, a negotiation with, with the Van Vliet that gets into their proposal in detail later on at another, another meeting?
Wouldn't it be a private matter after we made the decision?
Typically, something like that would be a private matter. There are, you know, the, the council can, can really do whatever they'd like in this point. I mean, you could structure this so you're essentially entering into some sort of development agreement, I suppose, Sean. Um, it's, it's a little, would be a little wonky, I think, but, um, yeah.
I'm a, I'm a big fa- oh, go ahead.
Well, no, I just, I like the Van Vliet proposal. I just hesitate with the so-called partnership. I want to know more about that, so that's where I'm, that's where I'm at.
Uh, I'm, I'm a big fan of Van Vliet. Bill, you know, we've, we've chatted. I think that, I, I love what you guys do. I love what you guys do for our community. I'm just thinking that extra $20,000, when we've lost grants for our libraries, when we are really behind the dime when it comes to like our funding for things that keep our community livable, that's, that's where my sticking point is. Like it's, it's, we're already below the real market value, uh, sorry, the assessed property, like the real market value. It's just, it's the extra 20 grand. But that's where my kind of sticking point is. I think it's, I think it's great. I think I, I want to, I, I'm also leaning towards Van Vliet, but I want to see if there's, you know, from 125 to 145 at the, at the, uh, real market value cost.
Councilor McLeod?
Um, Councilor Newton, you pretty much took the words out of my mouth. I agree. I like the, um, the Van Vliet proposal. Um, I would just like to see it, um, increased.
This is just in regards to the partnership, I'm not really concerned about that. I figure if you all got that worked out already, then it's not of the, you know, however y'all plan to do that is y'all's business. Hopefully it's above board, but again, that's really not, I don't think that's, I, I don't, I'm not interested in that information.
I don't really have anything to add. I'm in largely the other, sa- same position as the other councilors on Van Vliet.
Councilor Smith?
I spoke out of, out of order and I have nothing to add.
Well, Counselor, um, we have some differing of opinions among us. What would we like to do? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Can we make a motion to enter negotiations or to discuss further with one party?
I, I, I would defer to Sean, see. Best course of action would be there.
You, yeah, I mean, you could. I mean, but then I, at that point, we're, we need to, if, if we don't authorize staff to enter into negotiations to sell it tonight, then we're gonna have to have another public hearing. So we, we kind of want to make sure we at least give staff that because we, we have to have a public hearing when we're going to sell the property. Um, and if we're gonna change the parameters of how we're gonna do that at some, then we're gonna have to give the, the public an opportunity to come back and other people who might be interested.
So we can make a motion to allow staff to, um, begin negotiations for the sale of property to Van Vliet. Am I hearing you correctly? We aren't stating a specific dollar amount. We are selecting a, someone that would be chosen to move forward.
You could. But I think you, you want to probably in, in this, in this meeting tonight, tell staff what those parameters are because they won't know.
My concern with this thing is that the gentleman, the people put their bid in and we're bringing up the library in this discussion?
No, I'm just talking about.
I understand we had cuts. I understand we had budget cuts and I get that, but it's not on him.
I know, but it's our best interest to be responsible stewards of funds and money that comes in.
Could we, could we see a show of hands of how many councilors want more money?
I want more money. I'd like more money.
So I, I think what we've heard from, from council or from, our legal counsel is if, if staff wanted or, staff, I'm getting you guys confused. If council wanted to make a motion to authorize, because the council is, is really, you know, in the driver's seat on this one, it's at their discretion of, of how it's sold, um, for how much, for what use. It's, it's really at the council's discretion. So you, you could sell it to the lowest bidder, you could sell it to the highest bidder, you could sell it to, uh, the middle bidder. You could base it, uh, on the merit of their proposal. It's, it's really up to council.
Then you're done.
Oh, so I, I, I think what we've heard from, from Sean, uh, is that if council wanted to make a motion to authorize staff to negotiate with Van Vliet based on the merit of their proposal on a sales price with a parameter that you set, so that staff kind of knows where that mark is.
Well, or, or just, I mean, tonight, somebody can make a motion that we sell the property to, to Van Vliet for 145. Now, they don't have to accept that offer. I mean, they can say, we're not gonna, we're not interested in that, but if the council wants to make that, that motion tonight, we could do that. If that's the number, I'm just making, I mean, I don't.
But he'd have the opportunity to counter, counter also correctly, correct?
If he counteroffers, then we don't have, the staff doesn't have authorization to take that offer and, and if, if you say 145. So we're, I, I guess what I'm saying is if we're saying we're gonna give staff the authority to negotiate a sale with Van Vliet, staff needs to know what the parameters are. I mean, because clearly tonight is, it sounds like with the four councilors, it's not 125. So then what, we need to know what is it?
I have a question. With the, if they were to go, so we see 125 here, right? And so, um, while I understand we want more money regarding, or it seems like the majority of the council wants more money, does that more money go specifically to something else that we needed to go to or does it not? Because it, it might, if it's not gonna go to something specific that we're looking to, I don't see what the, I mean, I understand wanting to get bang for the buck, I get that. But at the same time, I, I mean, I was with. But at the same time, I mean, I was with Counselor Smith. I wasn't interested in even selling it, because it wasn't of urgent for me. But I think if it's not gonna go to something else, I think Counselor Newton brought up other things regarding what we, where we need the money for. If it's not gonna be allocated to something else, then what is, what are we doing?
I think we're overlooking the solution to the problem, which is right in front of us on the screen. Helping Hands has offered $25,000. Van Vliet's offered 125. That adds up to 150, which is $5,000 more than the appraisal. They're gonna work this thing out between them. I think that, I think the solution is right there.
That's not.
Counselor McLeod. Counselor McLeod's next.
Thank you. My, my question is procedural for the city attorney, actually, in that were we to give, if we were to give the city staff permission to negotiate with Van Vliet, would we then need to recess to executive session to be able to discuss the parameters for them to negotiate within?
And that's, that's the purpose. If when we go into executive session on real property transactions, is so that we can, we can talk about what we are willing to accept or willing to offer if we were buying property. But tonight, the way we did this with this bidding, that's why we didn't go into executive session, because it was, we're gonna take bids and then the counsel, sorry, was gonna decide based on the amount of money and the use proposed on what they wanted to do.
This really sounds like something we need to be in executive session for.
Counselor Van Vliet?
Yeah, so I don't know that I necessarily agree with the assertion that the solution's right in front of our face in terms of one parcel to Helping Hands and two to Van Vliet, because Van Vliet's proposal is for all three.
I don't think she said that.
In effect.
I got from it, Van Vliet's gonna buy it and work it out with Helping Hands. That's what I got from it.
What Counselor Smith just said.
What, yeah, what Counselor Smith just said, in terms of the combined proposals of Helping Hands and Van Vliet. And Counselor Smith, if I'm misunderstanding what you were saying, please.
Say it again. That might be helpful. Van Vliet wants all three parcels. Helping Hands wants one parcel. Van Vliet has proposed to make one of those parcels belong to Helping Hands, one of their three. To me, that, that says Helping Hands is gonna, has offered $25,000 for one of the parcels that Van Vliet wants to buy. And they can work that out among themselves, and everybody wins. That's what I was intending to say.
Could we, you know what we might, I mean, if you want to have Van Vliet and Helping Hands come back up and talk a little, we can open the hearing back up again and give them an opportunity to answer those questions and maybe even to talk about price.
Mr. Van Vliet?
I, I still had one more point that I wanted to, I wanted to address the kind of what's the point of the more money issue. And for me, it's, it's the responsible stewardship of city resources. I mean, we have these three parcels, and they've been appraised at a certain amount of money. And I think that without some significant compelling reasons, like I would like to see them go for appraised value for what they're worth. I don't need to, you know, start a bidding war with anybody and get up over appraised value, but I think it's a reasonable position to say that these properties are worth this amount of money and we should intake that amount of money if we're gonna, if we're gonna sell them. Especially if it's not an urgent sale. Like, we're not, again, we're not being required to sell these. It's not a fire sale. Like, no one's, no one's making us do this. So like, we could say, we're not gonna accept any of these bids, and it sounds like multiple council members would at least be satisfied with, like, well, we didn't have to sell it in the first place. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from on the dollar value piece.
Right, and that was, and my, my point of saying that is that it seems like that the reason, yes, we are to be good stewards, that's not, that's not debatable. My, my point is that it seems like we want the extra money to go to something else additional. And I'm saying, well, where would that go? Like, where is that, where's, you know what I mean? Like, I'm trying to get to that point. And they could also say they don't want to do any of it, right? Like, if they can walk away from us, and then we be back here again doing another bid thing. Am I correct? If they decide to say we don't, they don't, they're not interested in going up or giving us what we are asking for.
Correct, and if I could offer maybe a potential solution here, and Sean can correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, what I'm, what I'm hearing amongst the counsel is like to get the appraised value for it. Counsel could authorize staff to basically go back and offer to what is currently the highest bidder and a use that the counsel seems to be interested in, offer the property for sale at that 145, essentially providing a counter. And then Mr. Van Vliet could either choose to accept or not accept. If he accepts, then we're, we're on our way. If he chooses not to accept, then we're coming back to counsel asking, what would you like to do?
That's right.
That's, yeah, so I said originally, somebody can make a motion to sell for 145.
Can I clarify real quick, though?
Go ahead, please. You had, after her.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. Yes, I mentioned the library. Yes, I mentioned parks and that, but it was mostly to highlight that we've already had budget cuts. We just need to be good stewards of the money that can come in if we are to sell property that we don't need to. I'm not stating that this money's gonna go anywhere specifically. I'm just saying, if it's worth $145,000, sell it for $145,000.
Yeah, and I get that, but I mean, it just, well, to me, that's a, like, I get that, but why even bring that into the discussion if we are not?
Because I want to be, yeah, well, I was just trying to illustrate how I want to be a good steward of our money. I apologize if that was maybe a more roundabout way.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
I was just trying to.
Maybe it could have been a little streamlined, because I was like, okay.
No, it's all good. I totally get it, but I just was, we've just went through budget season. We know where money's been cut, and I'm just saying, let's, let's not, let's not intake any additional revenue if, if we, yeah.
Counselor McLeod?
I think too, possibly, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Counselor Newton, but literally, it sounds like you're, you're saying that we should not sell ourselves short.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's not do that.
And just to clarify, that's also where I'm coming, I'm not coming at this from the perspect, I would hold the same position of appraised value if we can get it, regardless of, like, I don't have a agenda for where the additional money would go beyond like where the proceeds from the sale are going already.
So what I've, what I've heard from the proposals is that a longtime business owner in our town wants to buy some property for 125, less than excess value, and create jobs, tax revenue, long-term, and we're quibbling over 25 grand. That's five jobs for five people that do not have a job right now. That's five people or five families that could feed themselves, that won't have to be on assistance. There's five people that will contribute to our tax base, right? That are me paying proper taxes to taxes in the city. I'm befuddled by 25 grand in the grand scheme of things. You look at the taxes over 25 years, you look at all the, Atlanta's been empty all this time, not making any revenue, and we're quibbling over $25,000. Yes, I get it. Good stewards of the money, but our economy is more important than $25,000. We need jobs. We need people to eat. We need kids to be housed, and we're quibbling over 25,000. That blows my mind. We just talked about a housing shortage at state level, national level. We have a person that's gonna put people in housing once they get a job working for his corporation. Are we a little short-sighted here?
I will have to agree.
Oh, largely. I'm not into sweetheart deals. You know, I just think it's worth 145. It's worth 145.
Well, he takes the jobs of Carvalis, and they're being enriched and we're not.
I don't think that would happen.
Did we get a second on the first vote or the first motion?
I don't think there was, was there a motion? I don't think there was a motion on the floor yet.
There was no, she was asking about the motion.
I was asking about Counselor Newton's motion. I didn't hear a second.
I don't think I've made a motion.
She was asking if there, what the motion would be.
There wasn't a second on the motion at that point, and I'm not even sure that you make it as the motion.
I didn't even make like a re-motion. I thought we were gonna reopen the public hearing and talk to the highest bidder.
Would you like to do that, counsel?
Yes.
So are we opening the public hearing at 7:17? We would like to hear from the Van Vliet Company. And no time limit on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Just chomping at the bit over there. I want to clarify some of the things first, in fairness to Helping Hands right here. The gentleman I talked to is the board chair, which is Greg Hannibal, okay? I did not have a conversation with you. I apologize. I think the two hadn't talked. And to clarify what we had discussed is Helping Hands owns the Sliver property. There's two lots that are the same size.
Bring that up, please, Matthew. I'll have Matthew bring it up.
I can look at my map. So Helping Hands owns Jackson, 821 Jackson Street, okay? And we're trying to purchase 519. So to clarify, what we're trying to do is we are trying to say that we'll get these three. We will open discussions with Helping Hands to say, we can flop those properties. We can trade them, okay? And it was a win-win for us. So trade 5.
Brian, restart, restart, because I have the map in front of me now. So flopping.
So what we're proposing is to take the address 821 Jackson, and that belongs to Helping Hands, then trade 519 when we, if you guys accept our offer, with them, and that makes it continuous property for Helping Hands all the way down 9th Street. And it makes it continuous for Bill Van Vliet to be able to do something to develop that property. So it takes it from a patchwork quilt into a solid quilt. You see what I'm saying? So I wanted to make sure I clarified that. And another point, I gotta make sure it's clear. Sean probably understand more about this stuff, but, and you all have done real estate deals. What we put together for you was a letter of intent. You know, upon acceptance of where we're at with this property, we're gonna do up an official earnings money agreement, which, because it states times of negotiation periods, checking out all the contingencies, and we will verify funds so that you know that he's got the money to pay for it. So those are all steps that will have to happen if you accept it. The other thing to say something about where we came up with the pricing is that we, we did market analysis of properties out in the area. And these lots are not in prime locations in the city of Albany, but they are usable lots. Any kind of land is good. And so we did our own assessment on what those properties were, and that's how we came up with 125,000. If you have to consider that our, we're thinking down the road, that if we switch these properties, that house is not in the best shape. I know it has been rented, but the one that's on 821 would have to be demolished. And early estimates on that, depending if there's any asbestos or not, could be anywhere from 15 to 20 grand. And see, Bill is going to assume that by trading out, that if we trade these straight across, he's gonna have to pay 15 to 20,000 to have that leveled so that he can utilize all three of those properties. So those are a couple of things I wanted to clarify. And Bill, do you have anything to add?
And also, the difference in mayor is the, between the 145 and 125, it's 20,000, not 25,000.
I'm sorry.
Just a trivial number there.
But this is, we came up with this plan because it was a fit for both parties. I mean, he want, he would like to see if he can help them, Helping Hands out, and this is a, he's not gonna lie, it's a benefit for him to expand his company. And I do agree with you that I think jobs are very important in this town, and these are living wage jobs. And it's gonna take him a little time to do it, but this will open up the door for him to be able to do that stuff. So that's, again, all that factored into how we came up with pricing and talking with Helping Hands.
I wanted to say that I appreciate the deal that you're working out with Helping Hands for this. I understand that this is going to be great for you to have all three properties next to each other. It's great that you're, that you're working out this land swap deal. I think that we should not be accepting anything less than $145,000 for these three properties. I, I don't want us to sell ourselves short. These properties don't need to be sold. I appreciate that you're going to be providing more jobs in our community. But I really don't think we should be selling these properties for less than what they're worth when we don't need to be selling them in the first place.
The other counselors?
Thank you, sirs. Any other questions for them?
Are you willing to come up to 145?
What's that?
Are you willing to change your offer to 145?
Well, like I tried to explain, that we encompassed all of that, and we also, there's expenses. It's not just you can't go with Helping Hands and say, oh, yeah, let's trade those properties. There's gonna be expenses involved with that, expenses with getting the property in shape when we make the swap.
With all due respect, sir, that's not our problem. That's your problem. We should not be selling these properties for less than what they're worth.
I'm just trying to help. I'm not, I'm not attacking anybody here.
I just want to say that, I'm sorry, that was, I'm just trying to think, I had something for you. Oh, I, you all said that you conducted your own analysis and things of that, that nature. Also feel that it is not fair to put you on the spot and ask you, were you willing to go up without having another process for you all to do what you need to do? I think you came in here with a goal. You presented your information. This is what you're offering. And, you know, good job with doing that, and thank you for answering the additional questions that we did have. And I understand that there is, there is cost that's going to be absorbed for sure, and I'm not short-sighted of that, so I just want to let you know, thank you for doing your due diligence and on your own side. I do appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Counselor Smith?
I move that we.
Mayor, since we opened the hearing back up, it'd be good to see if anyone else wants to talk again, because the hearing's been reopened. So if anybody wants to rebut or talk about anything that happened.
Anybody else in chambers would like to speak on the issue of the properties?
Is time limit on this?
Now, if you start to run on, we're.
Yes, sir.
Let's try that, too.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be respectful. So something that was struck our interest was how much time those two properties spent in homeless care and how it did not work out very well. Some of our law enforcement were hurt because of the custodial problems there. And we wanted to go away from that. And the reason to speak with Van Vliet about swapping properties is so that they would have a secured, bigger footprint as well as Albany Helping Hands. And that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish, not trying to undermine the city of assessed value of properties that are in a challenging location that don't represent very well for many businesses.
So as far as, as far as why we put the bid on the one piece of property instead of all three, as, you know, our narrative included all three originally, and then it came up that our board president was talking with the Van Vliet representative about swapping. And the, we weren't sure who was gonna bid, who was gonna get whatever. That's why we changed it and just decided to do the 519. Because based on the maps that I passed around, we can do what we want to do with that Sliver property. We still own the property that is between 517 and 503, does have a house on it, and we do get rent on that. So it's, it does have some value to it beyond just a dead piece, you know, an empty piece of property. So we weren't really sure, you know, what was gonna happen. And so like I said, that's why we put the bid on for 519. And in hearing, in all honesty, what, so we didn't have an agreement that we were gonna swap like for like. So in hearing, that that's kind of what the thought is, we're like, well, yeah, that's, okay. We want to buy the piece of property, 519. If we need to increase our bid from 25,000, we have authority to do that a little bit. We would like to have 519, because that will keep us together. We would like to have 519 because that will keep us together and we can do what we need to do. And we don't need to worry about 503 or 517. We would like to have it because we don't have to do the whole thing. But if that's not in the cards, then, you know, it's not in the cards.
And part of that is being a good neighbor with our, with Van Vliet.
Yeah.
So that we are able to work together in the community to do something better for both,
Right.
both Albany Helping Hands and Van...
So, any questions for them at all, Albany Helping Hands? Thank you. So council, what would you like to do?
I move...
We need to close the public hearing first. I close the public hearing at 7:27 PM.
You want to speak? No.
I'm telling you.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we have to reopen then. I reopen, I reopen the public hearing at 7:28.
I'm kind of adding that odd man out on this one. So this is mostly just in general. But I also did a CMA of the area, the same thing. And I understand where you guys respectively come from for an appraised value, which does not necessarily equal a real market value. The property can... Yeah, is this better?
Yeah.
Sorry. I also did a little CMA on the area as well. And I appreciate where you guys are coming from for appraised value. Just wanted to explain that real market value is not appraised value. You know, somebody can tell you the artwork's worth a million dollars. And if no one spends a million dollars, the real value is what somebody pays for it. And this has been out to public. People haven't had the chance to give a value of what they think the land is worth. Some people are higher, some people are lower. And I understand that you guys want to get the best for everything, and that's great. But just as somebody else in the public has put time to look into these properties, to see what's required, to see, to see what the development costs will be, to see where the location is, the challenges that have been in that location. These values come with research. They're not just numbers we throw out there. And so this is not to say that none of your guys' concerns are not valid, because I understand you want to get the most bang for your buck 100%. I just want to, just as one other who's put something in, is just let you guys know that we do do our research as well. We look at the real estate market. We look at the industrial property. We look at the commercial property. There are a lot of other properties that are worth that. If this was on Pacific, you know, it would be worth three times as much. But it's not. It's under an overpass that has had a very big history of problems in an area that has a lot of other issues that are hopefully getting better. So I just wanted to point that out, just as, that's all, so.
Thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing.
Wait, wait, before you close, ask if there's anyone else, just in case. Yeah.
Is there anyone else who'd like to have a conversation, speak to the council about these property issues? You're alert, okay. I'll close the public hearing at 7:30. Matthew, you have anything else?
Counselor Mayor, I don't have anything else to add to this. It's really, again, council's discretion of what you'd like to do here, sorry. So we're awaiting direction, if any. If the direction is to not do anything, that's perfectly fine, too.
Councillor Smith has a question.
No, Councillor Smith has a motion to make.
Okay.
I move that we accept the bid from Van Vliet and the bid from Helping Hands for a total of 150,000 dollars for the three parcels on the corner of Ninth and Jackson.
Can I, can I make a quick correction?
Let the city attorney...
So Van Vliet is proposed to buy all three parcels for 125, and Helping Hands is proposed to buy one of them. So we'd be selling the same property twice.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Then I'll add to my motion that we let them work it out among themselves who owns what. They have, they offered, the total amount of money from both parties is 150,000 dollars for three parcels. We'll let them sort out who owns which parcels.
But our portion would be 125.
Our portion would be 150.
It wouldn't be.
Okay, I get it. All right, I'm not good at doing math in public. I'll change my motion.
Okay.
I move that we sell all three parcels to Van Vliet for 125,000 dollars as offered.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
No.
Aye.
Should we have some discussion?
We've been discussing for the last hour.
I know, but a motion and a second.
On the motion and question.
Okay, so we have a, we have discussion on the motion? And a second?
Absent everything else, I would have been happy to sell as the bid came in from Van Vliet. I would remind you guys, Chris wasn't here, Council, Van Dremelin was not here. Eric Anderson, a former board member from Helping Hands, came before this council in January and delineated numerous issues with them. You can Google Helping Hands. It boggles my mind that we are falling on ourselves to help a group that has been, I mean, they were understate. I don't want to delineate all the problems. Eric did a great job. I would just refer back to that. So it gives me great pause, knowing that if we sell this, it goes to expanding a group that, a board that has real problems in this community. They really do. And it's all, I said, you can Google Helping Hands. And so that, that's the crux of my, my issues and 145,000 as well. So both of those issues. That's my statement.
We're lumping Albany Helping Hands issues into a deal where Bill Van Vliet is going to sell, buy those properties from us.
I get that.
Create jobs, also add tax revenue. We're equalling over 120,000, or 20,000, excuse me, sorry about that. I can't make a motion.
They're, they're already on the floor.
They're on the floor. So I'm just saying that I think we're spinning our wheels here, and I think...
Okay, so then call the, call the action.
Let me finish my statement. I give you plenty of time to speak. 20,000 dollars in the grand scheme of things for our economy is nothing. What he's going to generate with that property is jobs, feeding people. And it just, bottles of wine.
Sir, if we sell ourselves short for 20,000 dollars, who's to say that the next person will not ask us to sell ourselves short for 50,000 or 100,000? Our community deserves to have this money in, in our community. We deserve to have 145,000 dollars for these properties.
Can I call a question?
Wait, please.
No, just call the question.
Second to call the question.
It just means to have everyone vote.
I know. So do we have, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
Can I make another motion?
Can we have a roll call, please?
A roll call, please, yes.
Councillor McGee?
Yes.
Councillor Newton?
No.
Councillor Thompson?
No.
Councillor Van Dremelin?
No.
Councillor McLeod?
No.
Councillor Smith?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Bill, do you have another motion?
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion to allow staff to negotiate with Van Vliet for the property of a value at 145,000 dollars.
Second.
Anybody in discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
A roll call, please.
Councillor McGee?
No.
Councillor Newton?
Yes.
Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Van Dremelin?
Yes.
Councillor McLeod?
Yes.
Councillor Smith?
No.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents, oh, shit, I got to close it. Already did, I closed it. The council won't, excuse me. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for the councillors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during the public comment, but will take comments or requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If you're unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience until the rest, for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany, Oregon. I know Jay Vance was the first that was up there. So Jay Vance, please.
Hello. I have come at the request of Marilyn Smith, who suggested that I serve after I voluntarily submitted an application to the Human Relations Commission of Albany. And I am happy to serve in that capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying.
Yeah. Any questions that anyone has, I'd answer.
There's no back and forth during this time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Okay.
May I step down?
Okay.
Next is David Steele, is that correct? Oh, that's him. So he's spoken, okay. That's been taken care of, all right. Anyone, chambers, like to speak to council for their time? Thank you. Action items, resolutions, adopt the supplemental budget for Biennium 2325, Gina Jaeger and Jean Ambule, pages 221 and 228 in your packet. Did I say that correct? How do I say it?
It's Ambule.
Ambule, okay, thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. I have not had the opportunity to actually speak in front of you until today. I am Jen Ambule, and I am the new budget manager here at the city of Albany. And it's a pleasure to meet you all. I am here today to bring the final supplemental budget of 2325 Biennium to you for adoption. Within this supplemental budget, we are making changes to appropriations of 1,530,900 dollars, which is a very large 0.36% change to the budget. It does touch nine funds. And the bulk of these increases in appropriation are driven by higher-than-anticipated beginning fund balance. And then the remainder is just driven by increased revenue collections that offset these costs. I think I have outlined everything that you need to know in the memo and would take any questions that you have.
Any questions, council?
I have a comment. I sent a written comment earlier to the finance staff, thanking them for Jen, Jen and whoever else was a part of that for a very clearly written explanation of the supplemental budget. It's the best I've ever seen. It was really easy to understand. This goes here, this goes there, this came out of that. And it's, and I kept seeing, as you mentioned, higher-than-anticipated beginning fund balance and higher revenues than expected. All good. Thank you for good work.
You're welcome.
This was all Jen.
Great job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the feedback.
Any other councillors have anything? Do I have a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, it was a pleasure.
Thank you. Item B is adoption, adopt by motion, award a contract for WL-25-01, Seventh Avenue and Walnut Area Water Line. Bailey Smith, pages 229 to 232 in your packet. Oh, Stacy Buckstrom.
Good evening, council. I'm going to cover the staff report for civil engineer Bailey Smith. Staff is recommending that council award this contract to Windrose Excavation in the amount of 815,000 dollars, 752 and 68 cents. We received nine bids in response to the advertisement for this contract, ranging from the low bid up to the high bid of approximately 1.3 million. And the engineer's estimate was 937,000. This project includes construction of new water pipes that will replace older pipes that are undersized and then also deteriorating. Some of the pipes date back to 1949. The new water lines are going to increase flows in the system and system reliability. They'll allow us to abandon some redundant pipes that are located along Fine Street, and they'll reduce maintenance cost over the long term.
Any questions, council?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So that's great that we have a bid that's less than even the engineer's estimate. I'm new, so I'm just curious. Other than the total cost, are there any criteria that you all use to select who you recommend to get the bid?
We have to follow the Oregon revised statutes for public contracting. And so in this case, it's the low bid.
Okay, so it's just the low bid, okay. Cool, thank you.
So has the, thank you for that question. Any other councillors have anything? So do you notice the city, the people, the community, that you're doing this work? And then it's a regular process? Okay, the question is, is that when Hill Street happened a few, six years ago, people were upset. And being in Ward II, which is in Ward II, they, I went out there and I walked the neighborhood, and I was hearing about, why is it taking so long? And part of that was being good stewards of the money. We checked the pipes, the pipes are bad. We fix them and put the street back. So maybe we can do a handout or a soft tool or something. We can put on social media to explain, this may take a little long because you're checking the pipes or replacing the pipes and putting the street back. I think it alleviates a lot of stress and fear.
Yep, absolutely. We do that. We work with Matt Harrington to get messaging out. And then we send at least two notices for every capital project at the start of design. When we know that locates are going to result in paint markings on the ground, we'll set out, send out a notice, and then also prior to construction.
Council?
I, I move to accept the resolution and award the bid as, as recommended.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Thank you. I do want to say to the staff, Washington, I think it is, looks fabulous. So I drove in today coming down Washington, and so I'm really excited to see that done.
It should be complete by the end of the week.
Thank you, great job. Next, informational briefings and staff reports. Item A, Community Development Block Grand Program, oh, excuse me. It's time for a bio break. 7:44 PM. Be back in 10 minutes.
We need more water.
The COVID through the CARES Act, micro enterprise assistance, economic development assistance. We've provided resources to help with financial and technical assistance for businesses. And a couple of other things. Well, what can, the funding cannot be used for certain kinds of activities. And I won't go down the list, but what is interesting is that CDBG funds are not intended for new housing construction. So we have to find a different activity to support new housing construction unless a qualified community-based development organization were to apply for funds. But we get so little funding, you know, it, it, it just does, it's not enough to leverage new construction. So with the funding comes a lot of program requirements, regardless of how much money you get, it's the same program requirements for all entitlement jurisdictions across the nation. So we must develop a five-year consolidated plan, which is a strategic plan. We do a lot of community outreach and engagement to assess needs within the community and then identify priorities and goals. We try to estimate how much money we're going to get and where to spend the money to address those goals. And then we have to do the annual action plan, which is what will be the subject of the public hearing, July 9th. And that outlines how the annual allocation, in this case of 2025 funds, how those will be spent to address needs identified in the five-year plan. Then, and that, that will be a public hearing, one of two that's required. The other is a consolidated annual performance evaluation report. We hold a public hearing so that we can hear feedback on our progress and performance managing these programs. We do have to have an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. That is, we must affirmally further for housing as a CDBG entitlement community. And citizen participation, which we will hopefully change to resident participation someday. We do need to have the public hearings, as I noted. We have specific comment periods for different documents. And, and those are just those plans, but each activity must comply with a whole bunch of other federal requirements. And one of the things that takes a bit of staff time is conducting environmental reviews to comply with National Environmental Protection Act. Labor standards, if any project is subject to labor standards laws, that is a lot of extra work. I noted the Fair Housing Act, a bunch of other, let's safe housing rules. We have to make sure that all housing rehab activities do not disturb lit-based paint, that kind of thing. So there was a different version of this chart in your packet. I won't go over it, but essentially, you know, we assess needs and priorities. There is a community development commission, which the mayor makes appointments to that commission. There are representatives from the planning commission, human relations commission that serve on that, and then from the council. And currently, the mayor is, is your representative to that commission. And every year, we do agency consultations to sort of assess needs, and that gives the community development commission an opportunity to determine whether they want to prioritize a certain kind of activity. Maybe it will, will get more points in the scoring process. So we go through a competitive grant application process by requesting, solicit requests for proposals. So we don't go out and do the activities. We partner with agencies in our area to carry out these activities that meet national objectives. So the community development commission reviews those, scores those, and then the activities that are selected for funding go into the annual action plan. So then we, you know, hold a public hearing. We go through all the environmental reviews and we, we do all that. And the sub recipients is what we call the grantees. They do quarterly reporting to demonstrate progress on their grant. We want to make sure that they're, they're moving forward. They request reimbursement, so they don't get money upfront. So we process all that during the year, and we have to make sure that they're complying with all the federal regulations. And then after the full year, we do that performance report, which we call the CAPER. And that will be a public hearing in September. There are deadlines for the, for the CAPER, submitting that to HUD. And then we would close out each project once they complete funding. So this page shows you what our funding has been since the very beginning. It's sort of hovered around 400,000, but it's been dropping down, although there was a slight uptick this year. I'll note that funding after this year is really uncertain, but that gives you a sense of how much money we have been getting. So what have we been doing with these funds? So over time, public services is one of the most popular categories. It's the most competitive because the federal government caps the spending at only 15% of our total annual award. We've served, you know, probably close to 14,000 residents by now. This is through 2023 funding. You can see the different agencies that have received funding on the list here on the screen. We've helped non-homeless residents, homeless and at-risk residents. And then I broke out what the COVID-related CDBG CARES Act funds serve. So a lot of people have benefited from CDBG money. Housing-related activities, as I noted, we can't construct housing, but we can support housing needs in different ways. Housing rehabilitation has been a program since the very beginning through grants or loans to low-income homeowners. And then we've also done one grant to a, a long-term affordable housing nonprofit in, in Albany. We've done, we did have a homebuyer down payment assistance program, and then the market went crazy and that, that kind of went away. We've helped Habitat buy a house back. They reclaimed the house that they, they built. And then we did help creating Housing Coalition with their 27-unit tiny home village, but it was through, we helped pay for the clearing of a property, the property. So that's how they, we were able to support them. And then we've supported the shelters in different ways, trying to have, expand their ability to serve people by adding beds and then improvements to the physical structure, to both the helping hands and second chance. Economic opportunities, we've been trying to figure out how to help especially low-income residents gain employment and skills so that they can achieve their, you know, goals of whether it's homeownership or whatever it is. So we have, we, we used to operate a small business grant program here in-house, but we have tried to partner with Cascades West Council of Governments and Lynn Benton Community College on those programs. Business technical assistance through LB, through advising, discounts on courses, advising in Spanish, you know, a lot, a lot of businesses or residents looking to start a business. We've created or retained 28 jobs, and this is with non-COVID-related CDBG. And then we really use the COVID CDBG funds to help businesses, especially, 13 grants helped 74 jobs be retained in, in that hard time. And here are just a couple of our business partners or recipients of the economic development funds. And public improvements. So as I noted, we do request applications, and that determines what gets funded, but we are also always checking in with parks and public works to determine whether there are city needs that could be funded and addressed. And those might get priority over some other needs and applications. And the, the construction projects are a little bit cumbersome to manage with all the rules, but we have helped with a, a large section of periwinkle path replacement. The whole Sunrise Park was redone. Then the path between Sunrise Park was redone with lighting. We did nine curb ramps and then a pedestrian crossy with blinky lights over on 19th near Sunrise School. And a couple of blocks, or at least one block of sidewalk that's along the Dave Clark Path. And then most recently, as you've heard from Parks and Rec Director Kim Ledain, Lehigh Park, we did help, we paid, the CDBG funds bought the equipment for the park. So with that, I will just note that your packet for the July 9th council meeting will go out, you know, I guess in, in a week, and we will identify the activities that were selected for funding, and all of them were based on applications we received. But if you have any questions in general about the program, we thought it'd be good to, to come to you before that public hearing on the action plan.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Ann. That was a great job. Any questions, counsel? Thank you. Next is low-income assistance goals discussion. Kayla Barber-Pirata, it's a verbal.
Good evening, counsel. So tonight, this is really an item that gets you to do the heavy lifting, so I'm very excited to be doing this one. This is really just a follow-up discussion item for you. As you'll remember, during the budget discussions, counsel did direct staff to pursue some low-income assistance options. Since that was sort of shoehorned in, we wanted to make sure that we gave you some time to have some deeper discussion about what some of those larger goals might look like. That way, as we go out, we direct staff to start looking at different options and doing that analysis. We can do so with a better understanding of kind of the bigger picture that counsel is looking at. Depending on where you go with this, it can be a substantial lift, so that's going to be incredibly helpful as we delegate that, that out. Specifically, what we would be looking for from you is just an understanding of what are some of your high-level program goals around the city services fee portion of the low-income assistance. So just a reminder, it is that portion of the low-income assistance program. Are there pieces of the current system that you want to keep? For example, the one-stop shop came up a lot. Is that something that you want us to try to retain as we're analyzing? And then are there particular pain points that you maybe want us to, to be looking at or considering? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you. I'm going to be taking a lot of notes. I might ask some clarifying questions, but this is largely a listening exercise for us.
Counselor, counselors? Counselor McLeod?
Yeah, thank you. Any movement on having the fee reduced for, for those on the low-income assistance program, the city services fee? The, the city services fee? Yeah. Can you, can you comment on that?
I'm just looking for feedback now. And I, part of this is understanding what that looks like so that we can go back and look at options for you.
Okay. I would like to see, I would like to see the city services fee reduced or eliminated for those on our low-income assistance program, reduced further or completely eliminated.
Okay. Counselor Newton?
So the goal is to prevent service shut-offs before they happen, correct? With, especially when it comes to low-income services, we want to be able to get people before they're in like a, an emergency situation where maybe they have kids at home and they can't afford water to come through their pipes, right? So I'm wondering, so in relation to the city services fee, I don't know if there's like a way to, there's, because you still want folks to, like, open to subsidizing it. I think everyone needs to pay into it a little bit, but I don't want that to be a factor. I'm, I'm just trying to think, like, is there a way to, like, separate it when they're on the low, low-income services fee and like have like that be like a, I'm just trying to, trying to figure out a way to ensure that the portion that is paid towards the low incomes, towards the city services fee doesn't impact service shut-offs.
Okay.
So I'm trying to, trying to put that into.
I, I think I hear you on that. And yeah, this is part of getting that feedback tonight because I couldn't tell you how to do that today, but that's part of what staff would go back and, and look at if that's a possibility.
Counselor McGee?
Just so if we can make sure that we're capturing the amount of folks that are using it, so some kind of, I don't know, quarterly or, you know, report of like, we had, you know, 60%, now we're down to 40, you know, just to, so we can continuously keep our eye on it so that we know when folks have completely stopped using it or using it less or when we have an overhaul. And I would just like to see the percentage and keeping our eye on that as we, as we move into it. It doesn't have to be like every single month, but I'm thinking quarterly or every six months, something like that.
I, I would like quarterly reports. I'm curious about, again, kind of off the cuff, but utilization versus eligibility rates. Do we have an estimate of our population that we believe might be eligible for the low-income services rate, services program? And are there any groups that we've assessed that are falling through the cracks? Are they renters versus homeowners, seniors, or people with disabilities, or non-English speakers, or people with digital access barriers? Have we figured out, like, the people that are currently on there, the, I think, I think, is it 165, I think maybe 218, I can't remember, a very low amount, but do we, do they have, what have, how have they gotten there? And who are we missing? So I'm trying to think also, like, where are people falling through the cracks?
Yeah, and that's one that we would have to definitely dig into because the more, I will tell you, that one will be a little bit challenging because the more of the demographics that you try to get into, the more information that we end up having to pull, which then kind of competes with that, that streamlining of the application that we talked about last time, but it is certainly something we can look into. And is there a way to pull more of that information in?
Is the application process accessible and non-stigmatizing? Like, people don't feel like, they aren't made to feel like, wow, you're, you can't afford to pay your water bill? Didn't have your job, you know what I mean? Like, it's not.
Better not be.
Yeah.
Like, application-friendly.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Like.
Something a little soft, like, you know, just so it doesn't make people feel like, oh my God, I'm really down on my luck, you know? But I think, I think I know what you're saying, like a more of a, maybe a softer way to capture information, kind of like this is just, we're trying to assist and not make you feel badly about needing the assistance.
And, and yeah, and just speaking from personal experience, like, I, I grew up really, really poor, and my parents didn't ask for any assistance. And I just remember being really hungry. And I, you know, and like, I remember like our electricity got shut off once, and it's just, you know, dad will get it figured out later, you know? So I, I want people, and my parents are awesome, hardworking people, and, but I want, I want people that maybe just, that maybe wouldn't have gone and asked for help to feel like they're able to, that like, we as a city, like, we want to make sure our community feels like they're supported by their community.
And just, just kind of piggybacking off that, like, if there's a way to capture, I don't know, like success stories, like maybe this helped me for the first six months of me losing my job, and then after that, I was back on my feet. And I think it would be good to get some qualitative data in reference to the quantitative so that, I mean, we're going to be getting the percentage stuff, but like, it'd really be good to see, I mean, if we got 60% on it, this is hypothetical, but we look back in three months and, oh my God, we're down 40%. I think that's, that's pretty good. Like, it's working, people used it, they're not abusing it. I think that would be really good to capture that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is some level of combination of data or update or accountability there, as well as looking at maybe some efforts to try to sort of humanize that program for, I'm, I'm pulling it up into a bigger theme so that we, that provides us more options to sort of look at how to do some of those things.
I think that messaging like that would have reached my parents, where they're like, hey, we just need this help for a few months, and, you know.
Maybe that's the question, like, how long do you think you'll need it?
People don't know whenever you're in, you know.
But if somebody's like, man, I lost my job, or I'm laid off, but within the next, I'll need it for a year. You know, because I think sometimes, like, even when you're in, paying back your student loans, they ask you, like, how long do you need this deferment? Like, I need it for six months, I need it for two years, I need it for a month, you know, maybe. Just a, just another question you can probably add.
Counselor Von Dremelin?
Yeah. So in terms of things that I would like to see continued or preserved from the current program that I've heard about to this point, the kind of low barrier, low friction, not collecting data that we're not going to use, all of that rings true with what I know about, makes people more likely to apply for and use assistance programs like this, and reduces what we have to do or what Community Services Consortium has to do in terms of data collection for things that may not get used. One of the, the things that I consider to be a potential pain point is hearing that this is a once-a-year, week-long application period. And not knowing too much more about it, you, you've said a couple of times that, like, if something happens, people can be gotten into the program. But I think that any way that we can make that more than, like, the, like, kind of primary application, I get that that increases administrative need. But again, kind of going back to some of the other points that have been made, if you are getting into what is kind of considered to be the mainstream of the applications versus, like, the, oh, shoot moment, like, and feeling like you're needing to ask for something special, I think that that might be helpful as well if we can do that without creating an undue administrative burden that increases program costs.
And I will say, just, sorry, because I will say to that, our staff noticed that too, as we went, shared that flyer out with you at that last meeting. So even as we're going through this discussion, one thing that we are already doing is adjusting the flyer that we provide out to make it clear that there are, there are those options outside of that, because that flyer is very, it points, it makes it sound like it's a once-a-year, once-a-month thing.
Yeah, if you miss the deadline, that's.
And that's not how it's set up. So there is some stuff that's going to be happening just even before we get to this discussion around that.
Excellent, thank you.
Counselor McLeod?
Oh, I was, I was just going to comment on the, the question about asking applicants how long they might need the assistance. It's, it's something that has to be reapplied for every year, right? So I, I would not want to be asking them how long they think they might be needing this assistance and burdening them with that question, knowing that they're going to have to reapply every year anyway. I don't want to know if they think they're going to need it for six months or a year when they have to reapply for, every year anyway. I think that's a burdensome question that, that we shouldn't, shouldn't have to be asking.
I, I think my goal of getting that question was, I think low income is supposed to be help you, you're not supposed to stay on it forever, is my point. It is to help you get through a rough patch or if you fall behind. And I think one of the barriers is that sometimes people who really need it don't get an opportunity to get it because other folks have been on it for so long and have been taking advantage of it. So if there is, and I'm not saying we have to ask the question, but I'm hoping that we don't get to a point where they are applying every year. I'm hoping that they will be able to come up out of that poverty-stricken situation and be able to afford and take care of themselves. But there, you know, there are stories of people who have, not necessarily here, but just take, taken advantage of low-income housing, low-income situations that keep people who really need it or out of the loop because there's not enough room or we're still, you know what I mean? It's, it's designed to assist, it's not designed to hinder, and it's not designed to be on forever. It's not an affinity thing.
So, so thank you for all the counselors for that. Counselor Thompson, do you have anything?
The one-stop-shop part was mentioned, and I, I agree with that wholeheartedly. I think that's the way to go. Just whatever, the numbers, getting back to the same was already been said, the numbers seemed incredibly low, and so everything we can do to, to increase, I, I'm in favor of.
Counselor Smith, you have nothing? Counselor Newton and Counselor McLeod?
Do we know how many people have been on the low-income assistance program multiple years in a row?
I don't know the answer to that at this time. That's actually something I wrote here, is, is there a way to measure that? The answer right now is I don't know if we have a way of measuring that or not, so.
Okay.
I think that a program where you do have to reapply every year does have a smaller instance of abuse, simply because every year you have to prove again and again each year that you need this assistance, that you qualify for it, and, and that you should be receiving it because you qualify for it. I think that beyond, beyond that, asking them how long they think they, they're going to need it is, is, is not necessary. But I also think that, that just having them reapply every year, it keeps the, the instance of, of abuse down.
I would, I'm, I'm different. I would like materials so I can put on social media that I can share with my clients, that I can share with people when I go to, meet with high school seniors that may, could take that flyer to their parents and say, did you know about this? A lot of times, young people see things that their parents don't think they see, and if that child can take home, or that young adult can take home a flyer saying, Grandma, Grandpa, you may qualify for this, or a caregiver can say, you may qualify for this. Those soft tools and also the social media that Matt does with his team, I, I think would be a great way to expand the program, at least for people that are eligible. But let's soften the blow, make it easier, put the information out in front of them, and have them reach out to their city council to explain, right?
That's a fantastic idea. I wonder if we could even get, ask the school district to push something out through Parent Square. It would reach all the parents. They're there, but we can send something out. I'm, I'm just thinking, like, there's other ways to get the information to them besides, like, how we maybe have. So I like that idea of getting creative.
As well as LBCC resources for our, thrower of resources for definitely.
So I'm going to pull that up into a, of a theme of like identifying potential, if there's some other spaces we can kind of reach out through. Okay.
I think that's, I think, and, and that with that, anything else for Kayla? She's got marching orders, you think?
Oh, I, I just wanted to second about Parent Square. I, as a parent of a kid in gaps, I, sometimes I'm amazed at the things that come through Parent Square where I'm like, why, why is the school sending me this information? This is, this, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of like, oh, how did this get through Parent Square, but something else I know about in the community didn't. So I would, I would really love to see that pushed through Parent Square. So please do look into that. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Kayla. You have your marching orders? Oh, next on tonight's agenda is business from the council, and I think I started Ward Two last time. I'll start with Ward Three this time. Counselor McGee?
Just a few things. One, a constituent reached out regarding that obnoxious smell that seems to be appearing again in the ATI situation. Thank you so much for, I got the reply. And as someone who lives right there, it is funky, and I cannot keep my windows open. So if we can get ATI to keep them honest about what they're doing over there would be really helpful, number one. Number two, the NAACP Juneteenth event was really, really, really great, although it rained a lot. We had a great inside. I think we had over four, about over 400 people, food, games, crafts, keynote speaker, educational resources. The mayor and I, the mayor gave a great address. So that was really awesome. That was on Saturday. And then yesterday, I attended a Young Professionals event in Corvallis. I was invited by someone, and there, they have a, it was sponsored by Young Pros, but there was an organization that was helping them called ZONT. If you know anything about ZONT, helps and believes in the vision for women and cultivating women, character and jobs and all things empowerment for women. And they have a, a chapter in Corvallis, and mainly, I think, at some point, they may be trying to get a chapter here in Albany. So it was really interesting to hear about and really interesting to go to. ZONT, Z-O-N-T-E, and they're part of ZONT International. They were established in Corvallis, I think, in 1948. So they've been around for a really long time. They do a lot of fundraising, a lot of scholarships, so much so, they gave about 19 scholarships to LBCC students. They do a lot of good work, so hopefully they will start a chapter here. Thank you. So I have.
Counselor Smith?
Two things immediately come to mind, a reminder that the Lumberjack Breakfast is next week, July 3 through 7, I believe, and it's $12 for adults, Timberland Park. I have a lunch, or a breakfast date with Counselor McGee on Thursday, and another breakfast date with former colleagues at the Democrat Herald on Saturday. There is Progress Daily at Deerfield Park. It is so exciting to walk my dog by there. Today, we had to get around three cement mixers, and it, it's just so cool. They are, they are just doing a lot of work in a short amount of time, and I don't know how people who live across the street feel about it, but I think it's wonderful. Avery, I'd just like to bring up something that occurred to me during our discussion earlier about the properties for sale. It's easy to get caught up in the emotion of the moment and to forget that the code of conduct that we expect of members of the audience applies on both sides of the dais. Raising our voices and talking over the top of each other, guilty, I admit that. I, I am unable to follow Robert's rules effectively when I let my head get ahead of my mouth. And so I just wanted to, to let other people be aware of that, that we don't, we don't need to raise our voices at each other or at people in the audience regardless of what they're doing to us. They were very polite to see me, and I didn't expect that kind of passion and that lengthy discussion. And so I, I apologize for not anticipating that, and I contributed what I could. I will say nothing more.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Thompson?
I, I don't have anything, but I just want to get back to at the beginning of the meeting, you removed item 10B, especially the discussion of the construction excise tax. And whatever the plan is, I believe, I believe that there were, this, this came before the council in December of 2024. It was about to come to us in January. I believe that there are five or six votes for that right now. And so I, I'll take your word that's going to come back, but, but my, my patience with this keep getting delayed for, I saw the changes were in the, the changes were minor. It shouldn't have been delayed that long from January. So at some point, we, we need to have this before us. And if it's a matter at some point of the council taking votes to, to have this before us, then we should. So I look forward to it coming back.
Counselor McLeod?
Thank you. A couple things. I addressed concerns on social media regarding the condition of our local streets, including 12th Street. Council was copied on emails on that last week. Also, this morning, the mayor and I fielded email communications regarding, regarding the Periwinkle Creek Bike Path. So because of that, this afternoon, I walked that path between Queen Avenue and 9th Avenue. I observed fresh graffiti in the area and minimal litter. Overall, the path seemed well maintained and cared for. I spoke with the property manager of an apartment complex that abuts the path, and she would like to see the height of the fence in that area improved. She had questions as to who owned that fence. I, I told her that I think, I think the city installed it, but I wasn't quite sure that I would check on that. I, I, I hope that the, the city manager can help, can help us figure out who, who owns that fence. Also, a big thank you to the Albany Fire Department. There was, there's a wooden fence behind one of my family's properties that caught fire last week here in Albany, and I was able to contact the fire department for help while my husband turned a garden hose on the blaze, and the fire was fully extinguished in less than an hour. It was really scary. There was a lot of smoke, lots of flames, and the fire department really pulled through, and, and that, that really helped save a bunch of properties right there. So thank you, thank you for that, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Van Gemlin?
Not a lot to say tonight, except for thank you to the department heads that have reached out to me. I've got tours scheduled with APD, AFD, and the Parks Department at this point, with others on the docket to be scheduled. So I'm looking forward to learning more about all of the city departments and city services.
Fantastic. For me tonight.
You forgot me.
I forgot you?
Sorry.
Oh, first, Michael, Michael went though, didn't he?
Yeah, then he missed me. It's all good.
Say something, President, come on, Dave.
I, I would, I just figured, I thought it was intentional because you were going to be like, wow, Steph, like, just think you're great. So one thing, I thought that we were going to get a report on the stop sign on Elm and 12th. Oh, okay, I guess we're jumping the shark. Okay, I'm really excited. All right, maybe I shouldn't be. I don't know. All right, and then, oh man, my train of thought, I just got excited. Oh, I had something else, and now I'm forgetting it because I got distracted with being excited about a stop sign. Wow, is this 30? Come on. I, I don't know. If I remember.
She's going to make a correction.
It'll come back, I got a clarification. Okay, yeah.
I meant to say that I'm hoping that Zonta will come to Albany, not that they're, to Albany, not that they're considering. So if Zonta hears, hoping that you are thinking of starting a chapter in Albany. So just a correction, they didn't say it, but I'm really hoping that someone would think about Albany and Zonta in that way.
I know, I should have wrote it down. No, thank you.
So, so I had a couple things. The Juneteenth celebration was fantastic. It was lovely to see that many people of all races and fellowship and laughter and dance, great workshops on education, great workshops on community engagement. I really had a good time with that. Matter of fact, I forwarded an email to Peter and Kayla of FBI Civic Academy. I'll let you talk about that when you get a time. And over 700 people wishing me happy birthday on social media, and Counselor, Counselor's 60th birthday, and Counselor McGee, I tried to keep it quiet, and then she says, the mayor's birthday today, and he's saying happy birthday to me, so it was on Juneteenth, so it was fantastic. And I told a story about my experiences being the only person from my family ever to return to Africa, and how my grandfather asked me when I get back to Africa, if you ever go to Africa, please go down to the shore, take your shoes off, get on your knees, and say a prayer, and let your, let the ancestors know you made it home. And you think about the enormity of that, I mean, all of us have ancestry somewhere else, but think about you being the first one to go back to your origins, the enormity of that. And the other sailors saw me doing that, and they came over and spoke with me about, what are you doing, Johnson? Well, I said, are you the first person in your family ever to get back here? And they were like, yeah. I said, so let's talk about that. And I told them the story I'm telling you now, and we stayed up all night talking about family, great grandpas, great grandmothers. And it was a really deep moment for me, knowing the history that I was taught growing up, that the miracles that had to happen for me to stand there in Kenya on the shore was tremendously overwhelming, and there's a lot of crying going on, and there was no alcohol consumed at all. It was absolutely a wonderful moment in my life, one of those cardinal moments we talk about. So anyway, that was my story, and I shared it with the people at Juneteenth, and it was fantastic. And, and a lot of folks have stories that they should probably write down or have somebody write down for them. And, and that Low Income Assistance Program, I really want that soft tool that I can get to my seniors and people that I talk with about that may not be okay with me just bringing it up, but I can say, you know, we pat, we're handing these out, if you know anybody that could use this, please give it to them. And I think that'd be a way to insert that into their hands or get it in their hands and let them make the step forward or ask you questions about how do I get involved? With that, thank you all for your birthday wishes on Facebook and social media, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Chris Bailey's not with us this evening, as she's enjoying some well deserved leave. I'm going to ask Stacy Belkasser to come back up to address the two questions that council recently asked, one, one about 12th and Elm for stop sign, and another one about flashing warning signs in front of automated enforcement zones.
Hello again. So Counselor Newton, when I received your question about the converting the Elm and 12th intersection to a four way stop, I was kind of like, didn't we talk about this before? And doing some research, this question did come to council, I think it was in November 2020, and council heard from staff that has since retired, Ron Irish, Transportation Analyst. So the request at that time had come from a member of the Transportation Commission. And we went ahead and council did choose not to convert that intersection to an all way stop. They kept it with stop control on 12th Avenue, and then Elm Street does not have a stop sign. So when staff does evaluate intersections for stop control, we look at criteria that's defined in the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD. This intersection does not meet those warrants. The criteria includes crash data over a five year period. You look at traffic speed on each of the roads. But then the other thing that we were looking at was site distance. So when we did go out and evaluate this intersection recently, there is a bush, I don't know what type it is, on the northeast corner, that for people traveling on Elm Street southbound, it could block a pedestrian waiting to cross Elm Street. So staff's first recommendation is to either remove or do some sort of like more low growing landscaping. The other issue that's not always there, but could be, is there is a car that parks in front of the house on the northeast corner, and depending on the height of the car, it also has the potential to block a pedestrian that wants to close 12th Street. So, so this is a situation where it's not cut and dry. It doesn't by definition meet the warrants to change it to an all way stop. Council could consider maybe removing parking in front of the house, or?
I was curious about, so when you're looking at like, oh, it could block a pedestrian, is this like a normal sized pedestrian, like an adult, or are we thinking, because I'm just thinking about like four feet tall kids that are crossing that street?
We were, yeah, we were using that lens, and this particular bush would probably block a small child, yeah.
Can we, can we remove the bush?
Can we? Whose bush is it? It's located in the right of way, so we could remove it and put low growing landscaping on it, and so that would address that, that issue. And then the other potential issue that I don't think is, I mean, always there, and it really depends on the size of a vehicle that's parking in front of the house, is if like a large truck is parked there, it could potentially block like a, a person that's trying to cross Elm Street.
Don't we have height restrictions on some of the parking downtown? That vehicles are over a certain height can't park close to corners? And it seems that I remember that from some time ago.
I, I know we like have parking restrictions for site distance, but I don't know if it's specific to vehicle size.
Yeah, I, I seem to remember it on, I believe on Ellsworth and Lyon, near, near corners. I can't remember where they were, but it, it had been a problem with things like pickups with cab over canopies and that kind of stuff for a while.
I mean, so the two things we would recommend short term, other than converting the intersection, would be to change the landscaping and then just to modify the parking so that the car has to, a car parking in front of the house would have to be further away from that intersection, and it would solve the site distance issue there.
Let me try that, and I can see if I, how it's going for probably in the fall, when I have constituents that are reaching out, their kids are scared to cross that road, and just see if, okay, cool, let's, let's try those changes and see if that helps some kids feel safer crossing the road.
Do we need a motion for that? Give me direction. You took care of it, okay.
Thank you.
What was the other thing, Peter? Oh, before the automated thing, okay.
So we reached out to Benton County, Lynn County, and ODOT because we currently do not own or maintain any of those flashing lights on the school's speed zone signs. Benton County has three in their area, and their policy is they require school districts to program the signs. ODOT shared that what they do is they work with each school district during the spring, and then ODOT programs the flashing lights so that they turn on during drop off and pickup times. The cost of these signs is approximately $50,000 to $60,000. So they're more or less the same cost as installing a blinky light. When you install them, you typically also put what's called a sniper light on the back side, and so what this does, it allows police to know when the sign's actually working, and they need that for enforcement. The other option is police could have a PDF of the school drop off and pickup times. So there definitely is a cost associated with installing the signs. There's no requirement in the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices or in Oregon revised statutes to install these flashing lights on school zone signs. It's, it's really the road authority, or in this case, it would be council's decision to, I guess, determine a, a policy, and then also identify funding on how we would install and maintain them. The one, I haven't really had a chance to discuss this with police, so we would need to work with them to make sure that Vera Mobility is able to still enforce the red light and speed camera with the flashing lights, either by having a clear picture of the sniper light, or if the PDF of the schedule worked.
May I add, Stacy, that the ongoing costs of maintenance that we talked about earlier today, which, which over time can be much more than the acquisition cost.
Sure, so our transportation supervisor, Rob Romeo, he helped me gather a lot of this information, and what he shared is for the blinky lights, the, you know, they, they don't, we don't pay for power, they have solar power, but when they're hit or when the batteries need to be replaced, it's typically $6,000 to $7,000 to get them going again. And so it would be a similar situation for a school speed zone sign with those flashing beacons. It does allow you to post the restricted times for a reduced area, instead of posting it for 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, it would just be for when schools actually.
In and out, yeah.
Yeah. And so that's why you see them a lot of times in more rural areas where a school maybe is located on a, on a highway with, with higher speed traffic.
Thank you. Peter?
I have nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Stacy. I'll, I'll reach out to you tomorrow with that conversation, so if you need to take off, please. I will now recess to executive session.
Do we have an executive session?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
We had to, we took the first one out. The city council will now reset meeting and executive session to conduct deliberations with.
Oh, that's right.
Persons designated by the governing body to carry on the labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192660, Subparagraph 2, Subparagraph D. Representatives on news, news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into the waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit the people in the waiting room to join the meeting. In person, audience members must leave the council chambers and wait for, wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, staff will open the doors and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. I now declare the meeting, the executive session at 8:46 PM. Counsel, we have had a great presentation from our HR Director, great comments from our chief, Marsha Harndon. Is there anything you'd like to know or anything else you'd like to know? Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the tentative agreement as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. You have your.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. I'll get back to my work here. Where's my agenda? It's over here. So we've reconvened. Our next meeting is going to be Monday, July 7th at 4:00 PM. And work session Wednesday, July 9th at 6:00 PM for a meeting, a city council meeting. And I wish you all a wonderful 4th of July celebration. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.